Good evening and welcome to this, the October 14th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And a question for the city attorney. It's my recollection that there was no reportable action taken in the closed session.
That is correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Moving on, proclamations and presentations. When I originally went through the review for the agenda, we actually had on the agenda the update that we have from the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center. And so I was looking forward to that. But I wanted to announce that at the Business Alliance Meeting last week, Scott Kennison, the Executive Director for LV PAC, announced his retirement. And I was expecting to see him here tonight, but what I would like to say is I'd like to commend the great work that Mr. Kennison did. He was a remarkable leader for the Bankhead Theater and really brought a lot of great art to this community. I'm not the only one up here that has performed on the Bankhead Stage, but it truly has been a remarkable addition to this community and that has grown the appreciation for the arts on the stage, in front of the stage, and in front of the theaters. So just wanted to acknowledge the remarkable work that Mr. Kennison did and wish him all the best in his retirement. With that, moving on to the Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on these, but I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. We have several young speakers here tonight, and I'd like to acknowledge them. So we have, hang on a second here if I may, I'll take a bit of liberty on that, but we have Lillian Kastner, we have Savannah Skinner, and we have Grace Santos. So I'd like Lillian Kastner to come into the podium and speak. Let's see, um, oh, there we go, because otherwise I could grab a floor mic.
Go for it.
Okay, there we go. She's rising up in the world.
Hi, my name is Lily Kastner. I am eight years old, and I would like to ask the city government to act against on climate change because I want a livable environment for myself and future generations. My first suggestion for helping with climate change is that we build a microgrid to produce lo- to locally produce power using renewable sources. This would mean let city residents contributing to less water and caused by transmitting power for long distances and burning things like fossil fuels. It would also mean city residents having to worry about power outages less. I recommend that the city government build more bike lanes and get and take away at least a few cut our lanes to encourage people to bike more and drive less. This would be more environment friendly. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. And let me just say that not too far from this building, we have a two-and-a-half acre solar array that provides 90 percent of the power for this building. And we had a special committee set up on bike lanes, and those are great suggestions. So thank you very much. And by the way, our city manager drives an electric car, so he's doing his part, not burning fossil fuels. Savannah Skinner and Grace Santos.
I'm in fifth grade and I'm 10 years old. Dear city council members and mayor, we are in a climate crisis and people are not taking it seriously. It is not fair for my generation to take the consequences. Do you know 200 species are going extinct a day? That's 73,000 in one year. This is all due to greenhouse gas emissions and the rising temperature of our planet. I have asked that the new city climate action plan includes the following goals: 100 percent reduction of greenhouse gas emissions citywide by 2030, and the city needs to ask slash require more from businesses and citizens. We need to declare Livermore in a climate crisis. If we declare Livermore in a climate crisis, people will act and treat the environment better.
Thank you very much. And now Grace Santos. That's okay, it does that, no worries. You didn't break anything.
Dear city council and mayor, my name is Grace. I am 10 years old and I'm in fifth grade. Earth has been our home for years. People years before us had made this their home. They lived in a better environment than we do now. People are getting sick and dying. I am not willing to give up my life. We can do way better. Here are my thoughts of what we should do for the climate crisis. Ban single-use plastics. Fact, using plastic utensils is horrible because it is made with chemicals, and it is bad to put petroleum in your mouth, and it's bad to throw it in the landfill. Allow all residents to have bee boxes, if they want. Bee boxes are harmless, I mean bees are harmless. I am 10 and I have only got stung once, and that's because I almost stuck my hand in a tree hole. Bees pollinate everything with a flower. If the bees go, we go too, and I am not willing to go. Grow your own food. Me and my friend, we grow our own food. When we grow our own food, we are helping because when farmers drive their produce to the market, their vehicles pollute the air. We need more community gardens because if you live in an apartment, you need a free garden to plant in. Last but definitely not least, we need solar panels on all big buildings, including schools, offices, churches, and so on. Thank you for listening. My life and my future depends on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Just a quick question for the city attorney. Where are we on the update for our climate action plan? Paul Spence? Steve Stewart? We're bringing in the heavy hitters, guys. We're bringing in the heavy hitters.
So we are working-
Bringing a real answer now.
We are working on the climate action plan. We have been interviewing consultants to help us with that process, and Steve, if you want to say a few more words?
Yeah, we finished up our interviews for consulting teams on Thursday. We expect to be making a selection this week and coming back to you with a contract to start the program, including a real comprehensive community engagement effort. And we anticipate coming back to you in the end of November, or definitely your last year December meeting with a contract for that.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Great. All right. Moving on to the rest of the Citizens Forum, we have Greg Scott, Carol Garberson, and, okay, so Greg Scott, Carol Garberson, and then Bobby Kular, Todd Stephan, Evelyn Andrews. We've got a tag team here. Okay. Mr. Scott.
I am Greg Scott, and I'm here to give some representation and voice to some who are unsheltered, homeless at the moment, under polyethylene tarps, or in synthetic material tents, and now are generally cold in the season of the long nights. The homeless are at the front lines of climate disruption, and we've had frost a little bit this morning. In the low areas, we had frost on the first of October, which is unusual. It was a record low on the previous night of October 1st. In other areas of the country, Denver, on Wednesday, October 9th, it was 83 degrees at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. In four hours, the temperature dropped 40 degrees Fahrenheit. By midnight, there was a record low. The 83 was a record high, by the way. In eight hours from the 83 degrees in Denver on Wednesday, it snowed. In 18 hours, it was 19 degrees for a temperature change of 64 degrees. The unsheltered probably didn't fare very well in Denver. At the heart of the climate crisis is the housing and unsheltered crisis. The average commuter in California puts 14.3 tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere per year. The persistence of carbon dioxide is 40 percent of it survives for 100 years. I give some representation and voice to some who are in the squalor of the encampments among the used hypodermic needles and no sanitation. We give, I give some representation and voice to some who are living in their cars and some of those who are working one, two, or three or more jobs to survive. Some of these have been living in their cars for years. Rarely do resources go to those who are physically and psychologically functional and just need to help getting off the floor. I know of three homeless who are probably not going to survive the winter. $494,000 is to be spent on Crisis Intervention Services by March 31st, 2021. This is around $25,000 per month. Speak to us of Crisis Intervention Services, and I will speak to you all of the crises. It is said in these chambers that a commons is no solution for the majority of homeless. If a commons is no solution for the greater part of homelessness, then we have no solution for the greater part of homelessness. Without a commons for the majority of homeless, we do not even have the intent to ameliorate the greater part of homelessness. Without intent for the commons for the majority of homeless, we do not have the political will for a significant improvement for the majority of homeless. Where do we expect the homeless to go? What do we expect the unsheltered desperate to do? We are mistaken. There is a commons already. The homeless can legally sleep in city parks by law unless the city provides adequate shelter. This law is by the United States Circuit Court of Appeals for District Nine, which we are in. The case is Martin versus Boise, as in the city of Boise, Idaho, decided by three judge panel on September 4th, 2018. Circuit Court Judge Marcia Marzon wrote the opinion, quote, "We consider whether the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment bars a city from prosecuting people criminally for sleeping outside on public property when those people have no home or other shelter to go to. We conclude that it does," unquote. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decided to review the case in a 25-judge panel in April. The case is now trying to be, is trying to be appealed to the United States Supreme Court by the city of Boise. The case is generally referred to as the camping lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Carol Garberson, Bobby Kular, Todd Stephan, Evelyn Andrews, and Debra Fields.
So I'm Carol Garberson. I've lived in Livermore since 1956, and I, I just had to come and comment on some of the rhetoric that we've been hearing, both in the newspaper and at these meetings, from both sides of the downtown issue. I'm really appalled by some of the viciousness, the demonization of the other side, whoever, whichever side it is, it's happening on both sides. There's conspiracy theories, there's plain old mean-spiritedness that are coming out in letters to the editors and at the meetings. Supposedly, we live in a country where each person is entitled to his or her own opinion, whether they're on an organization or if they're in a business. The organization may have opinions, they may not be involved in anything. The individuals in that organization are entitled to their own opinions. It doesn't mean the organization supports it. I think everyone in this town is doing their best to promote what is best for the city in their opinion, and they're entitled to their opinions. We can agree or disagree with each other. Disagreements can come with courtesy and respect for others' opinions. They don't have to be demeaned, or belittled, or treated with contempt. It makes it an ugly place to live. It makes people, I have heard people say, "What's going on in this town? Why did I move here?" I know we're losing at least one valued member of our community because of it, of the acrimony that's going on. There are signs going up around town promoting respect and kindness. We can't have respect for ourselves if we don't have respect for others. I don't see how some people can look in the mirror and respect themselves. They certainly can't expect to be respected by others either. It's especially incumbent on our elected officials to remember these values and to set the example of living these values and treating people with respect. Some are not living those values, but it comes from both sides. It is time for this kind of acrimony to stop, this kind of rhetoric to stop. We are all in this to make a city that is a joy to live in, and it's okay to have different opinions and to respect it. So it's time for both sides to stop the nasty rhetoric and treat each other with respect and kindness and work to make this city what it can be instead of making it less than what we want to live in. So I hope that it can stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garberson. I sincerely appreciate your comments. Bobby Kular, Todd Stephan, Evelyn Andrews.
Mayor Marzon and city council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Bobby Kular. I am the Managing Director of the Sean Brock Foundation, and I am here today with Evelyn Andrews, Veterans Specialist for Las Pecitas College, and also Todd Stephan's Veteran Supervisors for Las Pecitas College. And the reason why we are here in front of you today is because we are having a unique event. It is a Veterans Day event, supporting two key foundations within the Bay Area. And what it does is it raises money for veterans who have served our country and who want to obtain a higher education in one way, shape, or form. My foundation was created in 2012, and it serves injured veterans who want to achieve a higher education. Sean Brock passed away in 2005. He died in Iraq after two tours in Afghanistan and his second tour in Iraq. He had a master's degree and he was working towards his PhD and was a captain in the Marines. So we are having an event at Las Pecitas College on November 9th, and we encourage you all to be there. Any support that you can generate would be greatly appreciated. That's a little background about my foundation. I'm going to have Todd give a little background about the second foundation that we are partnering with.
So first, Mayor, I thought you were talking about me with the young speakers. I was kind of excited there, but apparently not. My wife would agree with you on that, too. So not necessarily a foundation, but the Las Pecitas Veterans First Program, and we are tied to Las Pecitas College Foundation. We were established in 2008 and currently serve about 600 veterans, reservists, guard, active-duty dependents. Primarily, mostly are veterans. Wide range of services. I know a few of you have been out to Las Pecitas for to see our Veterans Resource Center, our book program, and if I list all of them, we'd be here for a while, which I'm really proud to say. We also do a lot of events. We heard about the 2.2 Honoring Veterans Day, which is coming up on November 7th for us. There's flyer out there. Honoring women vets. And really a big thanks to this community and our local organizations, VFW, American Legion, Valley Vets, and there's many others, Blue Star Moms. I'm going to miss a few. And on behalf of our veterans, thank you all. And I believe it's Evelyn?
Good evening. On behalf of the Sean Brock Foundation, the Las Pecitas Veterans First Program, we'd like to extend our invitation to all of you to come and join us on November 9th for the 2.2 Challenge Walk and 5K Run. And if possible, extend the invitation to the city of Livermore, as we would love to partner with everyone in our community.
And for more information, do you have a website?
Yes, we do. It's on the Las Pecitas website for veterans, as well as the Sean Brock Foundation.
Okay, and the Sean Brock Foundation website is?
SeanBrockFoundation.org.
SeanBrockFoundation.org. Okay, very good.
We'll leave these flyers if it's okay.
Okay, Sean is S-E-A-N.
Correct.
Yes, and B-R-O-C-K.
Yes, sir.
You'll find, if you want to leave those outside, that'd be great. And just wanted to give a shout out. Las Pecitas College and Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory were recognized with a, an East Bay Economic Development Alliance Innovation Award for a phenomenal program called Vets to Tech, where they provide internships to returning veterans to enter the technical field. So great programs you guys have out there at Las Pecitas College. You're a great partner with this community. And Bobby, I look forward to, you have a lot of folks out there on November 9th, the Sean Brock Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Debra Fields, Mary Perner, and Sue Workington.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Marzon. I am Savannah Skinner's mom. My name is Debra Fields, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about why she's so passionate about the environment. She, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's a 16-year-old named Greta Thunberg. She started being very concerned about the environment at 11, just a year older than Savannah, and she has been on a mission around the world. Last week, there were 7.5 million people in the streets all over the world concerned about climate change. Savannah was watching this, and she thought she really needed to be a part of this. I'm not sure if you know, but it's pretty much an epidemic right now with our kids with depression and mental health issues and anxiety issues. And while there's a lot we can contribute to that, I honestly think they're inundated with messages about the environment and the doom and gloom that could be in their future. And so I think that contributes to our youth's depression and anxiety about their future. I certainly know that's true for my daughter. So when I, I have to tell you, when I posted a little blurb on Nextdoor about what Savannah was doing and encouraging others to join us, I was really shocked at the feedback I got back. I thought it would be mainly positive, but as one of our speakers was talking about it, it was pretty nasty. And what I realized, very naively realized, was that climate change in this country is still viewed as a political issue. I have to tell you, I don't view it that way at all. I view it as, you know, this is the house we live in, and we're, we need to take care of it. So I don't look at it as a political issue. I look at it as a public health and economic issue. So one thing that I realized is we have a lot of work to do just in educating the public of what the issue is. And if you have not read the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report that Greta so often refers to, it's the nation, the world's top scientists got together last year and put together a report on what they viewed as the risks. And when you read that report, it's scary. I mean, it's, it's in the very near future that we're hitting a tipping point with our environment that there's no returning from. So I really urge the city to take an aggressive approach to our climate change plan. When I compared it to other cities around the Bay Area, it was honestly one of the worst in terms of being an aggressive city, trying to tackle our climate change, not only mitigation, but also what are we going to do when, when these things, when the fires really start hitting us, et cetera. So I really encourage you guys to listen to the public, engage the public, and I thank those of you who have engaged Savannah and sought her feedback because we're anxious to work with you. Thank you.
Ms. Fields, I agree with, it goes with what Ms. Garberson was saying. We have entered a climate where if you, if people have disagreements, they vilify it, they'll demonize, and we've entered a world where facts almost don't matter. And it's really quite troubling when people are talking about, people in authority are talking about alternative facts, and we all know what the facts are. So thank you for your comments. Mary Perner, Sue Workington, and Stephen Dunbar.
Good evening, Mayor Marzon, council members and staff. You know my name is Mary Perner, and this evening I'd like to speak once more about the need for pedestrian and bicycle traffic safety along East Avenue. I hope our concerns expressed to the council, that those concerns were occasioned by Yanely Morales' August 4th death, have not been forgotten and the issue will not be shelved. I know that staff has long-term plans for East Avenue, but I hope they will not be too long. Tonight, you're hearing from young people and families that seek the city's commitment to any and all measures possible in our community to address the climate crisis. Planning safe, dedicated bicycle lanes and paths like those needed along East Avenue. Bike-friendly shopping and dining areas and a bike-friendly civic center complex should be part of that effort. Enhanced bicycle use will go a long way toward decreasing traffic congestion and improving Livermore's air quality, thus reducing CO2 emissions and bringing us a tiny bit closer to a better world for our youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Perner. And unfortunately, SB 127, which was on Safe Streets, was vetoed by the governor. So that was, that was a disappointment. Sue Workington, Steve Dunbar, Clark Streeter.
Hi, everybody. My name is Susan Workington, and I'm here to tell you a story about what happened to me when I was homeless. Okay, I'm very disabled. I have severe rheumatoid arthritis and a bunch of other things wrong. I had a storage unit for 20 years because I traveled around for my job, and I lived in Livermore 20 years ago and worked for Kaiser Aluminum. It shut down, and they sold it to a biotech company. I left my stuff in there for 20 years, and then I worked for the state park systems. The manager changes. You know, I never had any problem before. The manager changed, and I went there to move my stuff from Stockton and, and move my stuff, basically, and I had another unit in Livermore. Well, this particular manager, I just want you guys to be aware of all this stuff, the scam. Okay, this particular manager told me, I was in the hospital, and she had this guy keep calling me and calling me and calling me. I'd be in the middle of an MRI, and the guy would call me, you know. They, the first night I was there, they stole my car keys. I fell asleep outside in the, in the disabled parking place, you know, because I had no place to go. I didn't get my check yet, and I didn't have money for a hotel room, which I usually used. After that, they scammed me for another $120, this one manager, and then she had these other guys move me. They broke everything, threw everything, totally disregarded the fact that I am this disabled, and they didn't care. My mother left me a little bit of money. She died last year. It was like maybe $1,400, and so it was enough for me to move. I had just gotten out of the hospital, and then I had to put up with this nonsense, and I'm still putting up with it. They have disregard for, basically, they were waiting for me to go into the hospital so they could rob my car and sell all my, they thought I was going to die, and, and I did too. And they were going to sell all my possessions, okay, like for a auction, one of those things. And so I want you guys to be aware, you're not, you're not in the same situation that I was in, but I was an easy target, and because I'm disabled, they're bullies, you know. And then I had another experience. I think I explained to you guys at one of the former meetings about how the homeless shelters are funded, and because they can only, they can't get money, enough money from me or the veterans, they, they decide to throw you out, you know. So I just want you guys to be aware of this. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
Sure.
Steve Dunbar, Clark Streeter, Kathy Streeter.
Good evening, council. Steve Dunbar, Marietta Boulevard. John, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor Marzon, you mentioned SB 2127, and I just couldn't believe it because I grew up where I had to bike to middle school across a state highway, on a state highway, and then across a state highway on a blind turn to get to Paulding Middle School in the Royal Grande to, to ride my bike to school. And Caltrans needs to wake up with what they're doing. It's unbelievable. But putting that aside, I'm here because these, these kids are here talking about climate change, and I would like to, too. You know that housing and transportation policy is climate policy, and people have already talked about that a little bit. I just wanted to add some other ideas. I know you guys are reluctant to start new committees, but we have an asset management committee, and I, I wonder if we should- committee, and I wonder if we should add environmentalism to maybe that, the tasks of their, their committee, because if we're not managing our assets in a way that are environmentally friendly, are we really managing them? I wonder. Beyond that, there are other things, the city's doing a great job with city buildings, where we have control, but we got to go farther. We got to go and change people's attitudes and change people's habits, and that takes time and effort, and I'm glad to hear that the Climate Action Plan has an outreach component, and we're actually starting to work on it, which, which is great. Personally, I live in a rented condo, and we don't have, we don't have compost. I have single-pane windows in Livermore in the summer, and I got to use the air conditioning. Are you kidding? That's a, that's a waste of resources, but I'm not going to buy double-pane windows for a condo that I'm going to leave in a year, you know? It's not, it's not, and we got to think about how to encourage changes for things like that. So I hope those are some ideas that will, will help you with really taking a big, detailed look at this. But I wanted to mention one more thing, which was, I realized what was striking me as annoying when we started talking about the Climate Action Plan in the past, and I recognize that we're adding, you know, we're adding consultants, which is great. We need them to get up to speed, but we have to have a dedicated person for this. We cannot, we had a person, and I think, believe they left, and it just kind of fell between the cracks for a little while, and I'm glad we're getting back to it. But we cannot let it fall between the cracks again. We have to know and be tracking exactly where we are with our Climate Action Plan. So when I ask the question, where are we on XYZ issue in the Climate Action Plan, we have the answer. That's, we got to keep that position rolling every day until, until we're down to zero emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me say, I appreciate your voice of sanity on Nextdoor. Clark Streeter, Kathy Streeter, Lisa Traumovich.
Clark Streeter, 457 Tyler Avenue. It's taken me a while to figure some things out, so I thought I'd pass them on, and that is about referendums and initiatives. As I understand it, a referendum rescinds an existing law, and that case, the legislative body is free, free to come back and try to make another law that covers the same problem that's more acceptable to the public. An initiative, on the other hand, creates a new law, and an important property of an initiative is that it cannot be altered by the legislative body, but only by another vote of the public. This makes it very cumbersome. The problem with this is if, if there are flaws with this initiative, it is very difficult to rectify the problems. The Central Park Initiative is flawed. The impacts are not clear, but I don't understand all the details yet. When I get through the, finally understand the entire 118-page initiative and its implications for other issues, I will come back and talk some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. Kathy Streeter, followed by Lisa Traumovich and Catherine Hayes.
Hello. Kathy Streeter here. I have a name to my statement. It's called a sincere statement of appreciation. Saturday night, Clark and I attended a cello and piano concert presented by Del Valle Fine Arts, and that beautiful concert in the wonderful Bankhead Theater made me appreciate even more the conscientious and passionate care our elected leadership and city staff have invested in the management and development of our wonderful community. We have a mayor who cleans up graffiti wherever he finds it, council members who spend hours and hours studying the copious amounts of information the city staff presents to them every month in order to make decisions in the best interest of our entire community. From stepping in to save the Bankhead Theater when it was a breath away from bankruptcy to forming a commission for the arts to support the wide variety of artistic talent we have right here in Livermore, to working out a well-thought-out development plan for our downtown, they have made careful, thoroughly researched decisions while encouraging and listening to our input and ideas. We showed our sincere appreciation by voting for the council members on the ballot in the last election in huge numbers, despite a concerted effort of a few to spend copious amounts of money to replace them. I hope the few will come to realize that we support our leadership and the thoughtful decisions they have made. Our council and city staff have listened, learned, and led the way to a very special place. Now, I'm done with that, but I would just like to say about these young ladies who spoke tonight about climate change, money matters. And I'll just say, I read an article in my, in The New Yorker about banks that invest in fossil fuels. It turns out Chase Bank is the top bank that invests billions of dollars in fossil fuels. So if you happen to have their credit card or checkbook in your wallet or in your pocket, get rid of it. Get somebody else's. Chase was first, Citibank was second, and that, that hurts when you start having people gather together and start getting rid of their credit cards and their checking accounts and going somewhere else. Bank of the West, on the other hand, is getting a little flak for saying they're not going to invest in fossil fuels, so that might be a good place to start, but there's lots of them. Ask them before you open an account. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Streeter. Lisa Traumovich and Catherine Hayes.
Well, this wasn't planned, but I'm glad to follow, follow Kathy Streeter, because I also wanted to say thank you to the council, Honorable Mayor, council, and city staff. I'd like to report on behalf of Livermore Shakespeare Festival that we have just completed our fiscal year 19 within budget, as we like to do every year since 2006, when we formed. We had a, we had a successful summer season, and we opened our new offices and rehearsal studio at 2172 Railroad, and I hope you'll all get a chance to come over and see us there. But specifically, I'd like to thank the council members and the staff members who've been so supportive of the arts and interested in learning more about our work and participating in it. I believe this summer, the count is that four of our five council members were in town and attended our festival. Our city manager attended. Assemblywoman Rebecca Bauer-Kahen attended, as well as several other city staff members. And this hands-on involvement in our community programming, this true interest and support of our work as individuals, as well as representing your jobs in the city, is really appreciated. And I think that's one of the things that makes Livermore so wonderful, is that all of you, city staff and council members, you really do care, and you really do involve yourself in the arts and the other types of programs here, and I really wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for bringing your arts to this community. Othello was absolutely jaw-dropping, and Complete Works was laugh-out-loud hysterical. So thank you. Catherine Hayes and Carl Winty.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Marchand. I am a relatively new Livermore resident, trying to find my way here and getting to know folks. I am going to also address the issue of climate change, but I want to start by thanking you all for the work that you've done before I got here, creating bike lanes and designated bike paths. This is a fabulous place to be a biker, and I'm hoping for more. I would also, like many of the girls who came before me and are, I feel like I'm standing behind and with them, I would like to ask the city to declare a climate emergency. The science is quite clear. The planet has already warmed 1 degrees Celsius. This is already causing catastrophic fires, heat wave deaths, and famine in many parts of the world. One of my students lost her house in Paradise. My aunt and uncle lost their house in Santa Rosa. We know these fires are going to continue. The warming pace is increasing due to feedback loops, and we expect a 2-degree warming by 2050. The girls who spoke earlier, I think, did an excellent job of describing why this is imperative for the younger generations. One of the famous climate scientists stated, "Humanity must choose between taking unprecedented action or accepting that it has been left too late and bear the consequences." And I'm here to ask the governing body of Livermore to act. Declaring a climate emergency specifically inspires action. In disaster, we Americans do what is needed. We step up. We help our neighbors. We distribute sandbags. We give to Red Cross. Climate change is a slow-moving but all-encompassing disaster. Declaring a climate emergency enables our collective imagination to focus on solutions. Such solutions can be grand, all renewable energy for Livermore by 2030, or it can be specific, bike lanes on East Avenue, but they are all necessary. I rode my bike here tonight, in the dark. College Avenue has no bike lanes, so even something like that can make a difference for someone to feel comfortable and safe commuting by bike. There are many other specifics that we can talk about, and many of the folks here did already talk about, and I really look forward to those conversations, but right now, I'm asking the city council to declare a climate emergency. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, as always, thank you so much for what you do. Those who put on a vest to go to work and protect us, thank you for what you do. I thank Mr. Chief of Police is back there. I thank you. All the city staff, awesome folks, people that want to have an efficient government of the people, for the people, by the people. Thank you for listening. Thank you all for listening to the heart of the population and what's coming through. As thanks go along, Mr. Scott Kennison, I want to express my profound thanks for making the Bankhead a better place. Like, I enjoy going to the shows. I think what he's brought to the table fundamentally hope he stays. You know, I do feel bad. Like, we talk about, well, is he painted by the few or represents the organization and the likes? But no one says Gene and Joan and who knows who, right? It's the LV PAC friends of Livermore, the Citizens for Central Park, Vibrant Livermore, all the various groups, but it's pretty clear how it's flowing through. Pretty clear that the same ownership editorial nature of the paper comes through, and it's pretty clear that it's a little deceit there. So I don't mean to be fighting words. I like the rhetoric. I like the vibe tonight, right? We are all of Livermore, but facts do matter. And when everybody is doing their best, then just please don't lie to me when you know it's a lie, right? If everyone's trying to get their agenda done, you understand what it is, but deceit of the public, deceit of your fellow man, that's pretty far down. Dante's Inferno, I won't go through the list. I think I've done that three times. To those, I know I'm supposed to address you all, thank you all so much for coming and speaking, speaking your truth, getting your friends up here to do it. Keep on, because an inert citizenry, an inert citizenry is the worst thing that can happen. We need to continue to educate ourselves, and climate change, man, it is an issue, and anybody that's going to throw vitriol at it, just, just, you know, it is what it is, but let's take action. And in terms of doing something, doing nothing, as Mother Teresa was helping people, someone said, "Well, don't you think this is just but a drop in a bucket?" And she said, "Oh, no. This is but a drop in the ocean." That's why I do it, right? So if we all put that drop in the ocean towards making the world a better place, gosh darned, it just might be a better place. So referendum versus initiative, may we all read and learn on that one to see how this all works and it goes and it flows. What I sincerely hope, and I know my generation hopes, is that as soon as possible, we are not talking about downtown, 8.2 acres, because we have fundamental issues that need to be addressed by good government. So let's move this along for what we can to deal with homelessness. And as relates to homelessness, I just implore everybody to be as efficient as possible with the use of the resources. One of the things I'm working on, and one of the quotes that stuck with me in the readings is, "Don't outsource leadership." So I know you're not outsourcing leadership, but don't hire a consultant to tell you what you know. Have the courage to take the action to do what you know to be best. Don't outsource that leadership. Take action. Livermore's an awesome place, and I salute you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. All right. Okay. What I'm going to do is just slightly rearrange the, the agenda tonight. Covering 6.04, I anticipate that some of the other issues are going to be a little more lengthy, and if anyone wanted to speak on 6.04, I don't see why you need to hang around for the entire meeting. So I'm going to move 6.04. Pardon me?
It's an awesome meeting.
It is, but some people may have other things they want to get done. So I'm just going to move 6.04, which is the consideration of the request to display the Rainbow Pride flag for the week of October 15th through the 22nd. So with that, I'm going to bring that up, queue that up as the first item under Matters for Consideration, if that's agreeable to everybody. Okay. All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you again for speaking tonight. Okay, so with that, city manager.
Honorable Mayor, on your policy dealing with display of flags at the Civic Center site for the purpose of government speech, there was a matters initiated at your last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself.
You can move it in front of the consent calendar, but you can also do the consent calendar.
But you know what? I'm going to, let's run the consent calendar first.
Very good. We'll be back in a moment to you.
Yes, and, because actually, you know, this, I'm still getting used to this Nextdoor thing, or the, the good reader here. So, all right, so with that, let's go to, hang on, back up here, close, and zip. Good thing I got people to keep me honest here. Yes, the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items for consent? This gives, also gives people more time to get a card up for the 6.04. Okay, do I have a motion for?
I'll move the consent calendar.
By Mr. Garland, Councilmember Coonbrooke seconds. Any discussion on the consent calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Now, we go to 6.04. Thank you very much. The fact that we had no public hearings kind of threw me off.
Honorable Mayor, on September 23rd, consistent with the newly adopted commemorative flag display policy, council directed staff to return with a resolution for council consideration, which would authorize the display of the Rainbow Pride flag at the Civic Center campus for one week, beginning on October 15th, 2019. Your policy describes that after a consideration at a meeting, you would ultimately direct staff, whether you believe that display of the flag is appropriate, whether this time period is appropriate, and with that, we await your direction.
Okay. Questions for staff at this point? All right. Do you have a card? Tracy Kronzak wishes to speak on this item? Tracy?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I just really wanted to say, first and foremost, thank you. It has been truly a pleasure working with all of you. I am the co-founder of Livermore Pride, and we were the folks who submitted the request. I can't say enough gratitude for this resolution, and thank you very much for that from both the city and the council. Secondly, we wanted to request one change to the dates, that the flag be raised on Friday the 18th instead of the 15th for the same period of time, but that would just better align with our event on Saturday, the 19th. And thirdly, this is an actual groundbreaking moment for the city, and we recognize that, and we are super, super proud to be part of it, especially within the context of LGBT History Month. And we at Livermore Pride are incredibly committed to making Livermore a rich destination town for not only the Bay Area, but also beyond, and we really and very much truly recognize the precedent this sets as a city of inclusivity and welcome, and just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. What was the date that you wanted to move that to?
To be raised on Friday, October 15th, or, sorry, Friday, October 18th.
October 18th.
Yes, please.
And then through to the, the 25th?
Yes. That is correct. That is correct.
I think we'll probably make that happen. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, City Council.
Okay, that's the only card that I've got, so I'm going to close the comment period on that, bring it back to the council. Comments for the council?
I, so we can, we can just make that change, the 18th to the 25th? Already done.
Put that in your motion.
Oh, so move with the date change. How's that?
Okay. Okay. Moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Werner. Any discussion on the motion?
Just really quickly, I've, and I assume all of us have gotten notes from, several notes from members of the public thanking us for this, and this feels like, at this point, it doesn't actually feel that groundbreaking, but I'm really glad that we're doing it, and I'm glad that you're glad. and I'm glad that you're glad.
And I understand the, you mentioned the Pride Day is on the Saturday, the 19th.
That is correct.
And it'll be in front of the Bankhead Theater.
In front of the Bankhead.
Right, very good. Right where we had the African ceremony and the Philippine Barrio Fiesta.
Yep.
And the powwow.
And the powwow. And anyone who's interested, you can go to livermorepride.org.
Great, so that's livermorepride.org.
Correct.
Great, thank you very much.
One more thing, I hear that you still need funding. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are working on funding not only for our events this year, but also incorporating as a community 501(c)(3) for next year, and for planning the event into 2020, which we also anticipate will also be held in November.
All right, very good. Let's see, did I call for the motion on that?
No, we had, wait, wait.
Do I vote on it?
I made the vote.
Okay, we made the vote already.
He made the second.
No, we didn't, okay.
We did not vote.
That's what I thought. I didn't think we made, we made the motion in the second, but we, you comments, any discussion, and we covered that. All in favor, signature of the votes, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Great, see you next Saturday. All right, moving on to, we go back into the order of the agenda. There were no hearings tonight, but we have several matters to for consideration. 6.01, this is the certification of the referendum petition against ordinance number 2089 regarding the development agreement with the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sarah Bunting, City Clerk and local elections official for the city of Livermore. The item before you this evening is regarding a referendum petition seeking to repeal ordinance number 2089 approving a development agreement for the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead project. The referendum requests the ordinance be repealed by the City Council or submitted to a vote of the people. There are two parts to the item before you this evening. The first is adoption of a resolution accepting the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency for the referendum petition. The petition, reviewed by the Alameda County Registrar of Voters using the random sampling technique provided by the Elections Code, has been certified as containing the minimum 5,269 signatures required to clarify it for further action. Second, after adopting the sufficiency of the petition, the City Council may take one of the following actions: either repeal ordinance number 2089, or adopt a resolution submitting it to the voters for approval. The City Council is not required to take either of those actions at tonight's meeting. However, it should be noted that the one-year period to adopt the same ordinance runs from the date the City Council repeals the ordinance, or it fails to pass by vote of the people at an election. Livermore's next regular election is November 3rd, 2020. We have budgeted $280,000 for that countywide consolidated election, and adding the measure would incur approximately $15,000 in additional costs. If the City Council wishes to call for a special election, the only restriction set by the Elections Code is that it be held not less than 80-day days from when the election is called. And this, again, is different from initiative petitions, which require a special election to be held within a narrow window of time. Staff recommends selecting and establish an election date for a special election, for example, March 3rd, 2020. This would guarantee that the Registrar of Voters is available to conduct the election, and there's a probability of cost savings if the date is shared with other jurisdictions. $800,000 has been appropriated for the March 3, 2020 special election, and adding this measure to the election would incur an additional $15,000 approximately. With that, staff is available for any questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Four cards, David Kent, Evan Branning, Clark Streeter. Mr. Kent.
Hi, David Kent. So in 1996, my family, Darcy, my two daughters, and I came to Livermore to purchase a vineyard to start a long-held dream of starting a family winery. And Mike and Rhonda Wood and their two boys, Harrison and Parker, also came at the same time. And since then, dozens of families have come into this region to pursue their dreams of small family wine-making in the Livermore Valley. In 1996, Phil Winty, who sold the land, said the building of a Wine Country Hotel was imminent, imminent, in 1996. Things happened, you know? Within another year or two, the South Livermore Valley area plan had already come into effect. It called for this hotel. Measure D actually had a carve-out to permit this hotel to be built even on agricultural land in the county. And by 2004, the city had done its specific plan and located this hotel next to the future Bankhead Theater. The Bankhead came, but the hotel did not come. And 24 years goes by quickly in the wine business, though this is another harvest that seems like it's gonna take forever. But we have really waited far too long. The livelihood of the families who are depending on this hotel have been put in jeopardy by this, this delay. When we bought our property, we took a mortgage, and then my employer gave me a second mortgage. The debt on the land, just the raw vineyard land, was greater than our net worth. And that story has been repeated over and over again in this community. We took a third mortgage to build a home and move our family here. And so what hasn't happened is the level of investment in the wine country that was promised when the conservation strategy was established, that preserving agriculture to put in an urban growth boundary and promote a wine country would be the order of action for the county and the city of Livermore. And so this is a great opportunity for the city to continue pushing forward on the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead, and I urge you to take the quickest possible action to see it completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Evan Branning, Clark Streeter, Lisa Traumovich.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Thank you all for all your hard work and all of your time. Tonight, we've already had a few speakers come up who've talked about the climate crisis in Livermore, we've had, or in our nation, and Livermore's actions for it. We've had speakers who've come up and talked about the bike plan, we've had speakers talk about transit and housing. We've had a number of issues that are very important to Livermore that have come up already tonight. And we're stuck in an endless cycle where we keep talking about downtown. And I've seen, and I've worked with staff, and I've talked with different members of the staff, different members of council, and I know that this is something that we keep getting so close to the finish line, and then the goalpost moves a little bit further. And it's the actions of a few people that keep moving that goalpost further and further out, making it more difficult and more expensive for the city. It is costing us not only in actual dollars that we're spending on staff time, on the referendums, the initiatives, and all of those stuff, their issues, whatever this will cost when it goes on the ballot. There are physical dollars that are going out the door, but there's also the cost it's making to our community. It's costing the small businesses every day that this is a construction site instead of a hotel, a park, retail, and housing. It's costing the wineries to not be able to designate Livermore as a wine-growing region without that hotel. It is costing everyone money continuously, that we're not even seeing those expenses. So when we talk about this, we want to move quickly. We want to act fast so that we can both save our community money, bring investment to our town, help make it a more vibrant place, as well as freeing up the staff time to work on those problems that we have. There are a number of issues. Homelessness is increasing in Livermore. I don't care what the count says, we've all seen it, we all know it, and we all feel it. We're seeing businesses that are struggling to get by. They're having to change their concepts, they're having to redo what they, their menus, they're working very diligently to support our community. These are all our residents, these are all our people who are suffering waiting for this to finish. I encourage you to move forward as quickly as possible in a way that is prudent. I hope that we're able to vote on this and move on and move past this, and I hope that we can free up the staff's time as well as your time to work on issues that are affecting all of us, that are so important to this community. I thank you for all of your diligent, hard work. I thank you for coming up with an excellent plan, one that was a true compromise plan, in which everyone got 80% of what they want. We have ended in a situation where we can build the best downtown possible, but we need to move forward and get past these votes. I hope we can do so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Clark Streeter, Lisa Traumovich.
Well, since I'm being followed by Lisa, gotta quote Shakespeare. "I am a few words." It's Edgar from King Lear. "I encourage you to adopt option B of this measure." Thank you.
Wow, that was...
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. I meant a few words. Lisa Traumovich, Don Argula, Carl Winty.
Hi, Council, staff, thank you. I want to affirm David Kent's comments. Our origin story at Livermore Shakespeare Festival began six years later, in 2002, but it was the same scenario in deciding whether or not to do an outdoor summer festival, start a company that way, or to start with a nine-month-of-the-year indoor, year-round style company, and then expand into the summers. I was promised that a downtown hotel was imminent, along with the wine trolley, and so I chose the cultural tourism model specifically because of the city's downtown-specific plan. So I affirm David Kent's comments, I'd also like to affirm Evan Branning's comments and concerns about our fiscal responsibilities here. It's not just the wineries, but also the downtown businesses, whose business plans were predicated on a certain number of customers coming into the community in that area. We also office downtown and have for a long time, and we're part of that community, and aware of those fiscal concerns. And so I encourage the council to move forward with the most expedient option, to bring the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Traumovich. Don Argula, Carl Winty.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Don Argula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I would just echo all of the earlier comments from the former, the past speakers. The, the chamber supports you in taking the most expedient path forward on this issue. We appreciate that you have stayed the course. You have done your job, and you've done it very well, and we are satisfied with that, and we support you. I was thinking about this earlier, and I started to get a little frustrated and a little disappointed and, and pained, thinking about folks that signed petitions that, that are in opposition to supporting their beloved downtown businesses and their wineries in this amazing wine region that we live in. How cool is it to say that we live here in a wine country? But I started to think about that, and I thought, you know, we've got a lot of really sharp folks here in this town, and I believe truly that they were misled, they were not fully informed, they did not check out what the initiative was, which is not a pretty picture. It was a major rewrite of a, of a blueprint for the downtown. So I would say this, we have in our offices, located at 2157 First Street in the heart of downtown, we have information there on the plan that was developed collaboratively with the community. It's a beautiful plan with all the elements that you've been promised by strangers and others, parking and, and green space and parks and hotels and commercial space, and it's pretty amazing. And the city plan is the plan, and we have materials in there, and we have resources for you. So please, come into our office, take a look, and learn more about that. So we do not support you repealing this ordinance, but to take the path that will resolve this issue hopefully once and for all. The other thing is that, you know, before we got to this point, the develop, the hotel developer was poised to break ground in 2020. That's amazing, after 24 years, that we were that close to seeing that begin to unfold. I think there's probably gonna be a little bit more delay, hopefully not much longer, but we're with you, we support you, we support our businesses, and we support our wine region, and we are, we stand ready to help educate people and to get communications out there so that they can make informed decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And that and cleanup, Mr. Carl Winty.
Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, team of awesome people, those that protect us, thank you. I certainly don't say that I speak for the majority of anybody, but I speak to a lot of people, and the general consensus is, we want to move on. We don't want to talk about this 8.2 acres, we want to have it go. So as now a somewhat of a student of referendum and initiative laws as laid out, right? Just please put it as soon as is afforded by the law, which I, as I read and understand, you guys have better counsel than I am, you guys know that loud and clear. I think it's March, let's go to March. We want to move on. We want to talk about other stuff. The Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead, yeah, 1996, Uncle Phil, my Uncle Phil, my mentor, my favorite uncle, my other one passed, I might cry at that one. It's not, it's not just the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead, it's the Arts Hotel at the Bankhead, it's the Music Hotel at the Bankhead, it's the Brewery Hotel at the Bankhead, it's the Distiller Hotel at the Bankhead, it's the awesome art shops, it's the community of us, it's, it's good for it, it was what was in the specific plan, I think of Rusty, I think of Alden Downtown, like, those businesses, they're not thriving, running away with it, right? It's a dogfight out there. And the same with the wineries that put their blood, sweat, and tears in, the Larry Dinos of the world, you know, those people out there, like, this will help, it's good for the community, it's been part of the plan. The few that moved the goalposts, again, dare I say, it's Gene and Joan and who knows who. It's the same, so the few, let's just say it like it is, I'm not looking to pick a fight, anything else. My Uncle Phil, anytime I don't know what's going on, I call Phil before I call anybody else in this world. And when asked, Phil, what do you think about what Gene and Joan and who knows who are doing? Quote, "I am bitterly disappointed in what they are doing, and I have told them so." So, we're gonna quote Uncle Phil, take that one home. Let's move on, thank you for what you do, let's make this the best place that we can for Livermore.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public comment period, bring it back for comments. The comments from the council?
Well, plenty of comments, I'm just not sure, you know?
Can we approve the referendum first?
Yeah.
Or whatever the thing we have to do.
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the certification of sufficient signatures.
Okay. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Werner. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Councilmember Coonber, you had comments?
Well, I didn't know we were ready for that yet. Oh, no. See, I'm not the only one out of order tonight, or you know, it's what we do. You know, there's just so many comments, and it's so frustrating to me. I thought the people who supported me would trust in my evaluation of a process and would understand that what I did was for the right reasons, and not because I'm subscribing to anybody's philosophy, 'cause I just don't do that. That isn't me at all. Anybody who knows me knows that. And I think this referendum is happening for the wrong reasons, I wish there were a way around it, but this has to be the way. I'm all for doing it in March, if that seems to be the best strategy. I'm just, sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned. I bet we won't do no special elections, we're not gonna do that. I also just, I dislike the fact that every week we get a political advertisement, quite honestly, sent to everybody's house in Livermore. And it's troubling to me that a source of allegedly truth isn't being truthful with the public. And I, I just, I want to, I wish we had some way to counter that, but we don't. And it's, it's going to frustrate me to the point that it's just getting pretty useless up here, quite honestly.
Thank you.
Is that on? Yeah, I guess it's been on. A year and a half ago, as I watched the debate from the audience, I was... debate from the audience, I was completely neutral as to the hotel location. All I really cared about was ensuring a viable hotel in downtown Livermore, as it was integral to the downtown plan. Downtown merchants, as we've heard, downtown merchants, arts and science communities, we need those out-of-town visitors to thrive. Organizations who want to host conferences need a downtown hotel, and we know that Livermore cannot qualify as a real winegrowers region. Okay, we've got 60 vineyards, we're real, but apparently we don't qualify without the right kind of hotel. Having a lovely place for out-of-town guests to stay is nice for the rest of us as well. What mattered to me most then and now was that our partner in the whole downtown project, the one who would, will build and operate the hotel, and who has the greatest stake in making it work, believed that he could make a go of it. Okay, that's really important. Somebody is putting time, effort, money, and has to make a go of it. That's the person with a great big stake in this. So now I'm not neutral. In the past year and a half, Presidio has redesigned the hotel to accommodate a height of three stories, based on another referendum. The whole project's been delayed by a couple of years. That's time and money for everybody, especially the person with the most to lose. Each delay, each rethinking forces our partners and our city, all of us, to spend money, as we've heard repeatedly tonight. Those who take, stake their time, energy, and money on the future, whether they be building affordable housing, arts, sciences, or this hotel, deserve some security as they plan and build. All of us need that as well, so that our downtown can be built speedily and well. Presidio's plan is carefully vetted, the company's worked well, and very, very patiently on the project. The development agreement provides the stability and certainty for Presidio to get the hotel done. I would say, build it speedily, but that ship's long since sailed. There are those, and I heard some just this weekend, say, "What's the rush? There's always another developer eager to invest." But you know what? That's not how people work together. We all know this, from something as simple as putting together a Thanksgiving dinner. What you need is you need to have people you can trust to get the job done. So in any group project, no matter how big or small, individuals invest their personal time, their skills, their money. No one wants to waste their precious resources, so reliability matters. Presidio has lived up to its end of our mutual project. We, Livermore, all of us, need to be a reliable partner in return. The idea that there's always a better deal down the road is a mirage, and mirages don't end in oases, they end as dust in the wind. Dust is what will happen if we do not support our partner in this project. If we demonstrate that we're unreliable, why would we expect any other investor to endure the same treatment? Therefore, I strongly support putting this issue to a vote in March, at which time I would urge all Livermore residents to vote yes. That's Y-E-S, so the hotel, and ultimately all of the downtown plan, can be built without wasting more of our precious time.
Thank you. Councilmember Warner?
Well, I think it's quite unfortunate that we have this referendum, because it was, the signatures were gathered through a deceitful process, we all experienced that, and the goal of that deceit is, as was pointed out by many, to delay. And it's just, hopefully, nothing happens. And in one of the previous meetings here, when that was pointed out, the people in the yellow shirts raised their hands, that they would be happy if nothing happened. So what's at stake here is, do we not just delay, but actually maybe lose another decade or two? And maybe that's what the one group wants, but I do believe that we have many, much more pressing issues to deal with. This is a huge drain on our time, and so I believe the time has come. It's very clear, do we want to get the downtown built now, or just delay and hope nothing happens? So I suggest we put this on the ballot in March, and we get it done. And I also urge everyone to vote yes, when the time comes.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Yes, thanks. I support the March date as well, and I appreciate Councilmember Coomer's comment, as you may recall, he and I ran at the same time and were elected and seated to incumbents in 2016. And like my colleague, Mr. Coomer, I am also a process-oriented person. And I think we, the city, ran a very effective process, starting with the committee, the steering committee, which Councilmember Warner and I chaired, we brought in a variety of experts, we then went out to the community to get their input. And so I think all of us, and I'll only speak for myself, but I, you know, I've never built a hotel, I've never designed a downtown, I've never built a retail business, I've never built housing, and I would challenge, I don't think many of the people in this audience, or even on TV, watching this at home have done that either. And so what do I do? How do I make a decision, then, if I've never done this myself? I rely on experts, I read information, I talk to people, I gather as much information as I can, and I make what I think at that point is then an informed decision. And I don't think there are some people in this community that have done that. And that's disappointing to me, because I think we have some fantastic staff, I think we brought in experts that know their business, where a hotel should be, what retail we can afford for the future of this downtown. And I, like many people, it's disappointing to me that we've had to spend so much time on this. And like, I mean, one of the criticisms from a small group of people, we spent half a million dollars on the outreach program, and we're not listening to the people in the community. Well, yes, I agree, we spent half a million dollars, but I don't agree that we didn't listen to the people. But how much money have we spent since then? I have no idea, but I'll bet it's way over half a million dollars. And so that's also very disappointing to me, the time and the energy that we've asked staff to put into this, because I think we have a fabulous plan that takes advantage of a variety of groups coming together and compromising in one way or another, and the synergism between some of the elements within the city's plan. You know, we put, the plan that's got the, has got the Black Box Theater and the Livermore Science and Society Museum next to each other for reasons, to provide that synergism. And in the drawing from the Central Park Group, you know, they're split apart. Well, that doesn't make any sense to me, not based on what we heard from the community and how we ought to move forward. So I'm all for, since we have to make a decision, I'm for moving forward, voting in March, and I certainly encourage everybody to vote yes. And let's move this city forward and get on to the important issues, like mentioned earlier, homelessness, vaping. We still got to deal with vaping, probably, in this community. And there's plenty of other things that we've just put off, climate change, we heard from these young people this morning. And I heard some other things about bicycles and so on and so forth. I mean, there are important quality-of-life issues that we need to deal with in this community. So I encourage everybody to vote yes on this referendum, and let's move this city forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I agree with everything that's been set up here. What I found fascinating tonight was when I walked into the meeting, and I looked out here, and according to the half-page ad that appeared last week, it said, "10,203 voters signed to protect the Central Park Vote Referendum." The Central Park Referendum, nobody spoke in favor of it tonight. Out of those 10,203, not one person spoke in favor of that referendum that they supposedly signed. Now, granted, about one in five signatures was invalid, they've still got enough, but to the Vice Mayor's point about the informed decision, I'm just curious, how many people signed the referendum? Show of hands? Okay, so one, okay, two people signed the referendum. Okay, this isn't going to have nearly the impact that I thought it was, but I thought there was going to be a larger crowd here tonight. So my next question was going to be, how many people actually read all 58 pages of the referendum? Yeah, none of those people signed. One person signed, yeah. So, I mean, I read it, we, all of us up here read the referendum, all 58 pages. We also read the 118 pages of the initiative. And I think this is somewhat telling, is that in that entire 58 pages on the referendum, the word "park" is not in the referendum, because it's not about a park. It says very clearly, "The referendum against the Ordinance Number 2089, entitled 'An Ordinance Approving a Development Agreement with 2205 Avenue LLC for the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead Project.'" And then it goes through all the other 58 pages. Fifty-eight pages, and it didn't use the word "park," because it's not about a park. And yet, I saw signature, every signature gather came up to me and said, "You want to sign a referendum for a bigger park?" And I said, "It's not about a bigger park, it's about a hotel." He says, "Oh, no, no, it's about a bigger park." And maybe that's why those 10,203 people aren't here tonight, is because, because they realize that they didn't sign a referendum about a park, they signed a referendum to stop a hotel. That wasn't what they had in mind. As I said a couple minutes ago, we've got a crisis of credibility here. Can we just be honest? One of the speakers tonight at the Citizens Forum said, "Can we just be honest? Can we be civil? Can we not resort to character assassination because we disagree with somebody?" Full-page ads denigrating people by name? I think we can get through that. We all want to make this the best community that possibly can be. And that's why I'm here, that's why we study all these issues. As I pointed out, I don't think anybody read the 118 pages on the referendum before they signed it. So are they going to put the work and effort before they vote on this? I sure hope so, because to the Vice Mayor's point, I want an informed electorate. But if they aren't willing to put in the time and effort to read 118 pages for the initiative and another 58 pages on the referendum, then I think what everybody wants to have happen is just have the representatives that they elected to do the city planning, to do the job that we were elected to do, and that's the city planning. And I think that's why we don't see any of those 10,203 people here, because they realize that this wasn't about a park. They said, "This is about stopping the construction of a hotel." And from what I heard tonight, everybody wants that hotel. So with that, the comment period is closed. I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
I'll move to put it on the ballot and put the...
March 2020.
Right, March 2020, but the, what, measure, the, it's, that's not the language word, but anyway, put the referendum on the ballot, fine, for March 2020.
A adopted resolution calling for an election? Yeah.
I'll second. Just for clarification, the motion, you have two resolutions for elections, one for regular in November 2020, and one for a special election in March 2020. I believe the motion was Resolution 2B-2 for a special election in March 2020. Very good. There was a second for that?
I second it.
Moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by, moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on that motion? This is for the March 2020 election. Correct? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. With that, once again, to set up a subcommittee for the ballot arguments in favor and for the rebuttal. We're kind of on a roll here, Vice Mayor. You want to keep up what we've got going? I think we got, we make a great team. So, okay, a subcommittee of the, for the ballot arguments will be comprised of the Vice Mayor and the Mayor, and we'll be back with those for council consideration. Very good. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on, oops, oh, yes. Wait a second here. Goals and priorities, there we go. 6.02, update on the fiscal years 2019, 2021, City Council Goals and Priorities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, as the PowerPoint comes up in just a second. On February 19th of 2019, the City Council held a workshop establishing its goals and priorities for fiscal years 19 through 21. The 19 through 21 goals and priorities and work plan were approved by the council on April 26th, 22nd, earlier this year. So essentially, every two years after the election, the City Council sits together and develops its priorities for the coming two years. This two-year period, they chose five areas of emphasis: asset management, downtown, emergency management and public safety, encouraging an innovation-driven economy, and homelessness, and affordable housing. What we're going to do this evening is briefly walk through the work that your staff has been doing on your behalf during the last six months, and give you the first of essentially several report-outs between now and the end of the 2021 period. So the next slide starts off with asset management, which is to establish a comprehensive asset management program, ensuring the community continues to receive vital services through sustainable infrastructure strategy. Your community group, the camp, continues to meet and is meeting again in October. And for our community outreach program, we are in the process of bringing a consultant team on board to give us a hand with outreach, because obviously, one of the items with asset management is to make sure that all of our residents and businesses are well-informed as we go through the process of making the choices to deal with asset management. We're continuing to work on data management and continuous improvement, and data inventory and GIs update, and we continue to set aside funds every two years, or every year, we have set aside $2 million for the past four years. So now there is a total of $8 million in your infrastructure reserve account. As we move into next year, we'll bring back to you the policy of sort of the use of those funds, and how to essentially best leverage those funds to maintain the infrastructure that we had. As you know, overall, the city owns several, two, more than $2 billion worth of infrastructure, and we do not have adequate current general fund resources to maintain those in exactly the same way we've been doing them. This is not unique. Virtually every city in the United States has a issue with infrastructure maintenance over the long term. What is unique is the council's continuing commitment to a long-term plan to sustainably maintain our infrastructure going forward. Our next item is downtown. You heard a little bit about that tonight. But in addition to that, we have made a number of progress items. So the goal is to enhance the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. The council approved downtown-specific plan amendments on May 13th, and the, on the construction front, on the hotel side, the SPD oil demolition has been completed, dealing with parking and circulation. The I Street parking garage entitlement package was prepared, council-approved acquisition of the adjacent parcel of land. Veterans Way, construction is now complete with the ribbon-cutting ceremony held on July 28th, and the Stockman's Park design is now complete, and next month, we will move into construction for the Stockman's Park, so we're very excited about that. As you know, the city promised that we would complete that park. It's taken a little while, a little over five decades, but we're well on task now to actually begin the actual construction. Our next item talks about emergency management and public safety. We are continually reminded that the council's goal two years ago, and then again this last April, is well-placed. The world we live in as a local municipality and as residents within it is much more complicated than it was just a few years ago. So our most recent... So, our most recent impact was the interruption of electrical services. During that time, your city's emergency operations center was convened. We went through all of the things that our training tells us about, is contingencies and making sure that we're well aware of what's going on out there in the environment. We were in Livermore proper inside the city limits, very lucky to not be directly impacted, but your staff is much better trained than it was just a few years ago, and we've taken some very active steps to move that forward. We have sent more than fifty senior staff to an intensive four-day training program through the California Specialized Training Institute, and eighteen more staff are scheduled to go later this month. We've conducted situational trainings and actually utilized our virtual E O C, which is V O C, allowing us to communicate even when things like the power is off or our computer systems are down, should that ever happen, for example. Public outreach and education, we continue to provide community-wide disaster preparedness information at Farmer's Market, downtown kiosk displays, social media posts, and library community presentations. I think our job got a little easier. The latest event with having the power shut off, I think, has caught people's attention, and we don't want to waste that attention. We want to make sure that people actually are prepared for physical disasters, as well as ones that involve utilities, making sure that we have adequate food, water, and supplies on hand, that we're aware of what we're doing in our own households with the disaster plan, that we know our neighbors and check in on them when we need to. All of those are critical skills that are going to serve us well, and we continue to get the word out as your staff to the community. Finally, under use of technology, we continue to install new high-definition automated license plate readers, and those have really helped us with very seminal, very serious criminals. So somebody that has a felony attributed to a vehicle or other serious crime, that has allowed us to intercept those people as they enter our community, and it's a wonderful force-multiplying tool. On our next priorities, encourage an innovation-driven economy. You see some pictures there of the lot on First Street as it transformed, including the event that we recently held there, including that wonderful piece of art in the foreground. It can be placed in your living room or family room, it's really appropriate for any room of the house. That one didn't get sold at the event, but it was a very neat pop-up event and an example of the kinds of things we're doing to utilize resources that we have at the city in an effective way to continue to provide vibrancy to downtown. It's a partnership with L D I, Livermore Downtown, and our Innovation and Economic Development staff.
They had a baboon made out of tires that was absolutely breathtaking.
That was breathtaking.
And the lion made out of basketballs. That was, that was just incredible. It was just a great event.
And you never knew you needed one until you saw it.
I almost bought that baboon, I should have replaced for it.
The concept is, yes, the concept is to continue to take steps to make sure that we are a vibrant, interesting, and attractive place, both for our current residents, our current businesses, and those who might want to invest in our community as either a home or a business. Making sure that there's a wide range of events, making sure that the community is enticing to a wide range of folks is really important to maintain our economic vibrancy. You will be considering the strategic plan for your comprehensive economic development strategic plan on October twenty-eighth. We've completed build-out of the Switch Labs, including incubation facilities, and Tri-Valley Connect Resource Portal is now live. And we've been talking about, a lot about hotels in the downtown this evening, but you know that your downtown, that your South Livermore specific plan includes locations for two thirty-room inns. And over the past twenty years, there's been relatively little interest in those facilities, but during the last couple of years, we've been very lucky to have interest on both of those sites, both in what is called SubArea seven, south of Sycamore Grove Park, and SubArea five, which is close to the corner of Wetmore and Royal Road. So very excited, those two hotels are permitted by right, they were written right into the plan. In fact, giant signs sit on those properties and have for so long that the paint's actually faded. So we are very excited that we have had interest in moving those two projects along, and they are, along with essentially the hotel in downtown, critical pieces of moving the overall community and wine country forward. Up next, we have homelessness and affordable housing. The council's approved the short-term pilot programs as recommended by the council subcommittee, and in fact, this month, we are rolling out a number of those programs, including our safe parking program, so we're very excited about being able to take the resources that came through the county, or the state heat funds that came through the county, and actually translating this to impacts on the ground, things like additional restrooms to be placed out into the community to mitigate some of the impacts and make it just a tiny bit easier to deal with some of the basic needs out there in the community as we move forward. In addition, escrow closed on two units at Station Square in August for six tenants with developmental disabilities. Wonderful program by a nonprofit in the community that the city partnered with, and that's a very exciting process, so that's another six folks who are housed as a part of this program here. No Place Like Home funding, Prop Two was secured in June of two thousand nineteen. Up next, we basically wanted to conclude by saying that overall, we're very excited about the progress that we have made going forward. The, your staff continues to work to bring these items forward in a very comprehensive We, these items overall are designed to maintain and uphold our quality of life as we move forward, and staff is available for questions at this point. We're just six months into this process, but we look forward to a lot more progress during the next eighteen months.
Questions at this point? Okay. In this...
So your item is informational this evening? You don't have any required action? If there are no questions, that concludes the item.
Regarding the downtown, I know one of the things that we've heard quite a bit about is parking and making sure parking is adequate. We know that we are taking care of that. I just wanted to, we've also heard about biking and other modes of transportation, and just was wondering if you could speak towards how the, how we're doing with the multiple modes of transportation in that area?
So overall, multiple modes in making the streets safe for pedestrians, bikes, and vehicles is a core value of the downtown specific plan. In fact, so much so that we've removed lanes and slowed traffic dramatically on First Street, that you see as we are doing re-stripings further down First Street, where it actually is four lanes, adding buffer areas, and making sure that our bike lanes are continuous or of appropriate width as they move forward. As we're doing the new housing projects along First Street, you'll see that there's actually a separated bike lane being developed as a part of that, using essentially the parking as a buffer between the bike lane and the travel lanes. And we're continuing to review and tinker with those items as we move forward. There are a number of items which are best practices now, and we continue to look for those best practices so that we can implement them in a cost-effective way moving forward. In addition to that, shared rides, non-motorized transportation, all of those things are part of the puzzle of making sure that people can come, interact in the downtown, and travel across the community safely. You heard some testimony this evening about additional ideas for that, East Avenue. In fact, you have directed us to complete that study. That is not something that slipped off your staff's radar on that, and we are at work on that, and we'll be bringing something back to you early next year as we move forward on that. But these are all difficult issues, especially as we do trade-offs between modes of transportation. If you have your favorite, and that one gets a little tougher, you know, people get quite concerned about that. One of the things we hear concerns about is additional delay for vehicles or other items where it's easier to travel by another mode, but maybe a little bit more difficult to deal by automobile, and those are trade-offs ultimately we'll be bringing back for you to listen to the community and give policy guidance on as we move forward.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, I've got two cards. This is a public comment on the update on the council goals and priorities. Carl Winty, Janice Cargo.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, and everybody behind me, I will be brief. My name is Carl Winty, and I grew up at fifteen fifty-seven Vancouver Way, and I live just outside of town. Every two years, a city council goals and priorities workshop is held to identify, discuss, prioritize key issues that will be addressed over a two-year period. Based on direction received at the workshop, a report outlining council's goals and priorities, including a list of action items, is brought forward to the council for consideration as part of the two-year budget adaptation product, process. Asset management, downtown, emergency management, public safety, encourage an innovation economy-driven, or innovation-driven economy, and homelessness and affordable housing. I just want to reinforce what you all know, and you all know that this is critical to what you do, right? Of laying out the priorities, that high-level direction to allow the wonderful staff we have to continue to move forward. So I know you've given this its due, I just don't want to overlook how mission-critical this is to the government, that is of the people, for the people, by the people. You are the democratically elected representative to represent the city of Livermore, to continue to make it better. So again, my appreciation for what you do, for listening, for being part of the community, part of the culture, part of the fabric, part of the heartbeat of Livermore. I salute you all, thank you.
Thanks, Winty. Ms. Cargo.
It's been a long time since I went to a city council meeting, but I'd like to thank all of you. I'm a fourth-generation Livermore resident. I've lived downtown my entire life, that's sixty-six years. I was associated with Proctors, which just recently closed for fifty-two years, just went through the painful process of closing their doors. I worked in a flower shop downtown for my aunt, Helen's Blossom Shop, was helping her for almost fifteen years. So when you were addressing the audience, wondering if anyone had ever done these things, I felt compelled to come up here. I'm trying to help on and now to reopen another framing shop for this community, and I, my husband and I have designed and built two homes downtown from the ground up, worked through the historical society planning. We've remodeled several homes, and I just retired after teaching for twenty-five years as a teacher in Dublin. I do think it's very, somebody said how hard it is to run a business, and no one has any idea how hard it is unless you've done it. I would like to, I know I'm terribly out of touch, because those twenty-five years of teaching were honestly fifteen-hour days, six days a week for me, but I did just retire. And I would like to offer my help and suggest that maybe this project downtown, the reason it was so easy to get that many signatures, was number one, the inconvenience downtown was at its pinnacle. Proctors was trying to close at that time. It put all types of enormous strains on us to try to get out of that building. And people were unhappy, our customers were unhappy. It looked, what was happening downtown looked very impersonal to the customers that were coming in. And I, you know, I put my name on the blue card, I would love, if you have committees or meetings coming up, I would love to offer my assistance as one who's been there, done that. And public relations is a big part of it. I know, having watched and looked at the Chamber of Commerce there, the downtown plan, the one that's on the corner of L Street and First Street, to call homes workforce housing, that, to me, there's been a P R problem there. It doesn't sound warm and fuzzy, welcoming and inviting, and some...
If you could wrap up your comments, please?
Yes. I just want to thank you for what you do and offer my assistance, and thank you.
Ms. Cargo, and congratulations on your retirement. Well-deserved, well-earned. Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the council, I'm going to close the public comment period. And so this was an information item only, so moving on to six point oh-three, this is Livermore Sanitation.
Oh, and just, I just want to say thank you for what you've done. It looks like very good progress. Keep it up.
Great. We just keep moving ahead. Okay, so we have six point oh-three, this is discussion and direction regarding the term extension options and programmatic enhancements for Livermore Sanitation. We have Judy Erlinson and Scott Lamphier.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and City Council members, Scott Lamphier and Judy Erlinson with Public Works. The matter before you is in regards to discussion and direction regarding term extension options and programmatic enhancements for the franchise agreement with Livermore Sanitation, solid waste recyclable materials and compostable material services. Judy's going to give you a brief update, will be available for questions afterwards, and L S I's staff is here as well, should you have any questions for them.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, and members of the City Council. This item requests City Council direction on the length of the extension term with Livermore Sanitation, also known as L S I. Two options are being considered, a three-and-a-half-year extension and a ten-year extension with an additional five years at the city's sole discretion. In two thousand eight, the city released a request for proposals for the collection of Livermore's solid waste and recyclable materials. The city received three responses, and incumbent Hauler Waste Management declined to submit a proposal to continue to serve the community. Ultimately, L S I was selected because the company offered enhanced services at the best price compared to the other proposers. The city is now in year ten of an initial ten-year term, which ends on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Because the end of the initial term was approaching, in December two thousand seventeen, the City Council authorized staff to negotiate additional benefits and services for the community in exchange for an extension through two thousand twenty-three, instead of issuing a new request for proposals because of the comprehensive package of services provided by L S I and the expected rate increases and costs associated with procuring a new franchise agreement. In fact, recently, some local cities have experienced increases of thirty percent or more at the beginning of a new franchise agreement. These large rate increases are not surprising, given the uncertainty of a new contract, but an extension term would yield relatively lower rates since L S I has experience serving the Livermore community and can rely on accurate account data and actual costs. The current contract allows for a three-and-a-half-year extension. With a three-and-a-half-year extension, L S I would continue to use the current inventory of vehicles, and most of the franchise agreement terms would remain the same, with some exceptions. Specifically, L S I has agreed to include furniture and mattresses in their three annual on-call pickups at no extra cost, and provide ongoing services to temporary homeless encampments, along with some other enhancements. L S I staff have indicated a preference to extend the franchise agreement for a longer term of ten years, which would yield multiple additional benefits and rate stability to the Livermore ratepayers compared to a shorter extension term. For instance, L S I has agreed to limit rate increases to a modest amount for the first two years, and after that, most adjustments will be based on C P I data. In fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, actual costs would be used to set rates, and the increase would be limited to a three percent cap. If a larger increase is necessary, it would be spread over multiple future years. Also, if a longer term is selected, L S I will purchase new vehicles at the beginning of the extension period, and new containers will be phased in over the extension term. In addition, the calculation and shared risk related to processing recyclables would be modified, which is projected to save ratepayers nearly eight hundred thousand dollars in the first year of the extension period. Regardless of the extension term selected, L S I's compressed natural gas fueling facility has reached the end of its useful life and will need to be upgraded to accommodate development needs in the city. The cost of these upgrades are over two million dollars, and equipment is expected to last approximately ten years. It's important to note that upgrades will have significantly less rate impact if amortized over a longer term. Staff recommends that the City Council select an extension term of ten years with the option of up to a five-year extension at the city's sole discretion, and direct staff to return with a resolution to finalize an amended and restated agreement to include new equipment and enhanced services for the Livermore ratepayers. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, questions? Okay, um, that was quick. Do you have any cards? There we go. Thank you. I noticed that, uh, San Ramon was looking at a rate increase of about thirty to forty percent, uh, since they just changed their, their hauler, and Cresta Valley added a rate increase of about thirty percent. So, okay. So, I, we'll open the public comment period. We've got Judy Zaka?
Zaka.
Zaka, Mary Perner, and Greg Scott.
Um, Mayor and council members and staff, I would urge you to rethink the staff's suggestion to extend the franchise agreement with Livermore Sanitation for ten years and the option of additional five-year extension. Livermore Sanitation has real service issues that residents are unhappy about, yet every time I try to address these issues with staff, nothing changes. Also Judy Erlinson, who manages this relationship, is always very extremely defensive of them. I would expect that someone working for the city would be open to hearing commentary about their service. I know when I managed large business operations, I never always knew what was going on when I wasn't around. I always appreciated when customers would provide me with feedback, good and bad, so that it could be addressed. In fact, her commentary to me about the dramatic rate increases was almost, almost supportive of them. Basically, she said they could take the increases that the contract allows. I'm guessing whether they need them or not. How about running your business more efficiently and being creative in how you approach problems? Those of us on a fixed income have to be very creative in order to keep paying for their services. In my cost-cutting analysis a few years ago, I figured out it would be less, significantly less money if I disposed of what little amount of trash I have at the dump myself once a month. Some of my personal experiences, including the exorbitant increases in fees, which is extremely difficult for those on a fixed income, poor customer service, they are out there taking photographs of trash, I'm trying to put unwieldy branches into a square can, um, and it, which is very difficult. Trash is left littering the streets after the pickup, this, the other day, I'm out there picking up all this kind of recyclable stuff that's been laying all over, and the cans are strewn up out the streets like bowling pins, they're knocked over constantly, and you're dodging them as you drive by. If you look at some of the feedback on social media, the reports are dismal. Um, I'll, I got six of them, but I'll just read about three. Um, this one is from Yelp, it's from Sean S. I assume these guys, and possibly women, have some incentive to get through their roots as quickly as possible because they seem to value speed over quality. They continuously leave trash that was originally in the can, but did not make it to the box of the truck on the ground for a not-so-adoring public to admire. It seems that some people whose job title is or similar to sanitary engineer, uh, would be a little more sanitary. In addition, they have at least a few very aggressive drivers, don't seem to value safety. I witnessed on several occasions where they block cars in or drive right in the middle of the path of an oncoming traffic. And there's quite a number of them on Yelp that are talking about the aggressive driving of the drivers and almost hitting children and things like that. This one's from Elizabeth B. I believe that they spend more time increasing their rates than they actually do picking up the trash. I received yet another rate card regarding the new price increase beginning in July. Amid I had to laugh when I read it, quote, "Thank you for using your blue and green carts. Your efforts helped save the city of Livermore and reduce the amount of waste sent to a landfill," end quote. To show our appreciation, we've increased our rates another fifteen to twenty-one dollars a year. Enjoy. From Sylvia B., another increase again. Those of us on a fixed income have already difficulty paying our bills. Some of us don't need such large bins. We have the smallest amount of garbage bins, and it would be, take me four weeks of garbage to fill it, yet we have to pay the same rates as other households. How about giving the seniors a break? Too many increases over the past years, we have no choice. They add late fees, but they want to be paid ahead. We need to break from monopoly. And the list goes on. Go to Google, go to Facebook, go to Nextdoor, the comments are all very similar, but nothing's ever addressed. You talk about cost savings and additional services and stuff, what about looking at the services that they actually provide? And people aren't happy about them. You know, why are we rushing into an agreement? That report seems very one-sided about it. You know, I would have loved to have seen a chart of cities within the, I don't know, fifty to sixty miles of Livermore, and what are their rates and what are they paying? From my understanding, Pleasanton pays significantly less, as does, um, San Leandro, who is serviced by LSI. Um, and now they want to start, uh, charging us more money, and then they're offloading their financial collection services onto the city. Well, that's a burden to the city as well to have to pick up doing those expenses. And I-
If you, if you could, I'm trying to be fair to everybody here so they don't have the same amount of time.
That's fine. Um, you know, we really need to look at everything that LSI is providing, and not just cost and everything else. We need to really, you know, instead of them taking pictures of us, why don't we go follow them and see what they're doing? Go drive out in the neighborhoods, you know? I'm constantly having to dodge the, the trucks and things like that. So there's some real issues there that aren't being addressed, and they don't seem to want to be addressed. So hopefully, something will happen and change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Perner, uh, Greg Scott.
You just stole a little bit of my thunder. Oh. Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council members and staff. My name is Mary Perner, and I live nearby in a townhomes complex about two week, two blocks from here. The council, again, may be voting on an extension of Livermore Sanitation contract. The staff has recommended council direct them to approve the extension. I have two concerns with regard to you doing so. First, since China no longer accepts recyclables from other countries, our ability to process recycled materials has changed considerably. As part of the key to the city program, I visited the Livermore Sanitation Department. Members of that department expressed serious concerns and much uncertainty about how Livermore's recycling will be impacted. We were told then that only number one and number two plastics could probably reasonably be recycled. I have learned since then that pieces of glass can ruin entire batches of recycled paper and cardboard. These materials are currently placed together in the same bins. Since that visit, the situation in California has worsened with closure of one industrial major recycler with many outlets. How much of Livermore's single-stream recycling system actually ends up as usable materials? In approving this contract extension, does the city have full clarity that the time and energy relating to transport and processing is more land and climate-friendly than placing unsorted materials into the landfill? I hope this city contract extension allows for continuous rethinking of current processes as times change. I have a second concern, and it's more personal. She was referring to low-income seniors living, uh, living in Livermore and paying the fees that are being charged right now. I live as environmentally responsibly and frugally as I possibly can. I consume very little. As an individual, I utilize composting and many other reuse and recycled measures. It's a moral thing with me, not just financial. As a result, I create very little trash. In fact, my trash and recycling bins don't fill up for weeks, yet the Livermore sanitation rate for me, which means they don't go out for weeks, the Livermore sanitation rate for me and for other low-income, low-waste people, even if we are seniors, it remains the same as their basic rates. This seems unfair. I would like the city to reconsider the issue while working out its contract with Livermore Sanitation, and in light of this, uh, and my recycling concerns, um, I hope you will keep all of that in mind as you negotiate. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perner. Uh, Greg Scott.
Background, I would like to thank Councilwoman Monroe and Councilman Warner for their time as far as the Human Services Commission, um, interviews. I enjoyed my time there. Um, I thank you for that, allowing me to ask a question at the end of the interview, and my question was in regard to the status quo and, and transitioning. Uh, as far as human services, I feel strongly that a lot of the status quo is not working. It's rather horrid from my view out there, especially on the picture of homelessness. You asked me a question on, uh, I bring that up because, uh, on this item here, it seems like you're going down the path of status quo. You, you don't seem to bend on certain items on status quo, a- and you go down for this length of time with these agreements without changes. Um, you, I felt a little, you asked me a question in that interview on the human services, it was a resource question, there is three hundred thousand dollars to distribute, and , uh, requests from service providers for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I think I let you browbeat me a little bit on that, because I was trying to make the point from the beginning that, um, I would take in immediate community needs. Um, I think you have immediate community needs here on this item as far as trash services. For example, in human services, you have seniors, you, it's under the Human Services Commission purview, and you have seniors on fixed incomes who are basically camping out in their homes, they're hungry, there's a waiting list of seventy on Meals on Wheels, they don't eat because they're trying to pay rising trash bills, rising water bills, they're on fixed income, and it's more and more fees. How do they do this? They go hungry, and yet, we don't provide the services, uh, that we need, I think, for getting them fed. Um, it's, it's, it's like the same mode, this status quo mode, and we're not addressing the community needs we need to. Uh, we are talking about compostable materials here. Uh, in this chamber, it's been mentioned that we are spending three times on compostable materials as what we're doing now, as we would in burying them. Isn't, doesn't a red flag go off there? I mean, there's a tremendous amount of energy in compostable materials, we're talking about climate change, shouldn't we be doing things different here as far as, uh, our waste management, as far as, um, uh, composting, uh, climate change, and incorporating the homeless? There's people out there that want to be productive, they want to get off the floor. Why can't they be involved in waste management? Um, and try to bring these costs, not only lower the rate of increase, but bringing these costs down, especially for people on fixed incomes. Um, uh, just one last point on the recycling, uh, why don't you ban plastic bags? Why don't you do something about the waste stream? Um, the statistic is that we're each ingesting about seventy thousand micro particles of plastic per year. I mean, why don't we stop it from going into the waste stream? The best we ever did was eight percent recycling on plastic, that's when People's Republic of China took the plastic. We're doing even worse now.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay, then we're going to close the, uh, public hearing and bring it back to the council. Uh, questions or comments from the council? I just got a couple. Uh, nobody, you want to go for it? Okay. Okay, nobody else moved, so I just-
I'll move. So I have a couple of questions based on the, uh, on the comments that we have. First of all, could, could, uh, Judy or someone on staff, uh, speak to three questions. One is this changing landscape of recycling. I recognize that we have a separate problem, which in reducing, reusing, but we're just talking about recycling and how we can manage that. So that's the first question. Um, a second question really is around the low-income problem, and whether they would be seniors or, or not, people who live on low incomes. Fixed income is another story because it could be a high fixed income, um, but low-income is, is a problem. Is there a way that we can, uh, as a city, manage that? And, and I don't know if that's a contract issue, or if that's something that we as a city can, can manage. And then the third question, um, we get this, one of the things that I learned is that I have a small bin, uh, for, for garbage, um, and I discovered that I was actually being subsidized because it's not actually the size of the bin that matters. And I wonder if you could speak to the nature of the infrastructure being the cost of providing what is effectively a public good? So those would be the three. You get them all?
I think so.
Great.
Uh, so, first part, the size of the bin, uh, no, the size of your garbage bin doesn't, isn't a big impact on costs. What the cost is, is driving the truck past your house every week. Um, that is really, I'm going to say ninety-nine percent of the cost, not, not how much garbage you put in your can or what size can you have. Uh, so the second question on the low-income model, there is a program that, uh, Livermore Sanitation offers that if PG, if you qualify for the care program under PG&E, you can have any size container except for the ninety-six gallon container at the twenty-gallon price. Now, it doesn't help the people that are able to get by on the twenty-gallon container, but for those with larger families, um, they are able to use the, the thirty-two or the, the ninety, um, sixty-four at the price of the twenty-gallon. And, and I think there's probably thirty or forty people, last time I checked, that are taking advantage of that. Um, and then the third question, you asked about, uh, China's national sword, um, it's going to have huge impacts on future recyclables. Uh, the ten-year extension term contemplates how we might deal with that, and of course, if there is language that's flexible enough that if we were to need to come back to council with changes to that contract on the way we manage that and, and price that, uh, we would certainly do so. Thank you.
One of the other items is that, um, we do work in a regulatory framework, which is governed by the state of California. Um, so, one of the issues has to do with the fact that, um, recycling costs and composting costs are higher than landfilling costs. Um, however, the cities in the state are held to a standard of a certain percentage of recycling necessary by state law. Um, so collectively, as the state, we have, uh, concluded that, um, recycling and, uh, com- uh, using compostables for a certain percentage of our waste stream, um, is important as a public policy matter. Um, and that does have cost impacts, uh, to all of us in our bills, um, because some of those means, ultimately recycling some of those materials is more costly than actually landfilling. But as Judy noted, the actual, um, contract will have language that allows that if, uh, thresholds are met, um, the city council will ultimately be able to get to reconsider whether, um, some of those items continue to be recycled.
So we had the que- the question about the status quo and why we might want to go with a status quo as opposed to making a change. What would be the economic impact or other impacts of making that change?
Well, I, I don't have the economic impacts of all, all the different options, aside from if we were, if the council were to determine that it was time to issue an RFP for collection services, we've seen significant rate increases in the community, so that would, that is what I would expect.
Customer recumber?
Yeah, I just, I mean, my experience with any garbage provider, whether I lived in Hayward or here, whether it was BFI or Waste Management, is that sometimes they will drop things, and they, happens, it doesn't happen here more frequently than it does in other places. I don't think it's, uh, you know, that, that part doesn't trouble me so much unless they completely prove that they are out of line on a regular basis everywhere. You know, if it's a really, you know, our guy in our neighborhood is actually very good at picking up stuff that he drops, and he understands when he does, he stops his trucks, gets out, picks it up, so, lucky us, I guess. LSI probably can't control the amount of recyclables China buys. That's kind of out of their domain, unfortunately, so they can't do much about that, and nor can we create a market for that kind of stuff. So it's kind of, those are the kind of things that are, I, I consider out of, out of LSI or Waste Management, or BFI, or whoever the provider is, they would have no control of this, no matter who they were. So I'm not even, you know, I, I can't consider that so much. I know as they're doing the best thing they can, and I am too on a low in, low fixed income, and, uh, it's always troubling to see things go up. As a former businessman, when I was working, I understand that's the nature of the beast. That is just the way things work. People want raises, equipment falls apart and needs replacing. These are the kind of things we have to consider, that, you know, we could have a bunch of broken-down trucks, we can demand they use electric trucks or some, because there is actually a, and I'll get to that probably in matters, uh, but, but there are ways to convert some of their trucks to electric, and maybe that is a, something to propose back to them to, hey, take a look at this, what can you do? Sure keep my dogs from barking first thing in the morning, but, uh, I, you know, as an individual consumer, I have nothing but praise for, for LSI. They have been wonderful with us. Yes, they charge for picking up furniture, if they're allowing, if they're going to create as part of this ten-year plan to pick up furniture and mattresses free, uh, you know, I, I, it's hard to be against that, because I've been very comfortable with paying the price for taking old furniture away. It's been minimal, and it's been, you know, okay, so.
Customer recumber?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, heard the, uh, couple of comments about, uh, say, service quality and customer satisfaction. Do we actually, um, track that and notice whether it-
Do we actually track that and notice whether complaints have increased or decreased or stayed the same over the years?
So yes, we do. Part of that is the photos that was mentioned. We take photos of things, not only to help educate the customers, but also to track driver performance. And when those things decline, it's addressed. City staff follows trucks from time to time.
So my question is, that's how you gather the data. I'm asking, have we seen any trend in the results of the data over time?
No, because quite honestly, I've received so few complaints in the past ten years that there's not enough to say there's a trend. I mean, I would say I've had less than six complaints about service from, from the community over the last ten years.
Okay. So that was one question. Then the other is, I'll just say that I think the longer-term contract is more cost-effective and that makes sense. And given that the service quality seems to be acceptable, that it's in the interest of the community to have a longer-term contract because there are significant cost savings.
Mr. Carling?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Warner that the ten-year extension makes the most sense to me. I, I'm concerned that if we went out for a bid, that we'd be whacked with a huge increase, much like what a couple of communities that the mayor mentioned have been experiencing. So that certainly was of concern to mine, to me, as we heard about this. To Mr. Coumber's point, the national sword issue is one that the whole country is facing and not just LSI. I mean, particularly the West Coast states are the ones that are most impacted by what China's done with national sword. We, we talk about national sword almost every time I go to a Stop Waste meeting, so it's something that has been on our minds in the county for quite a while. So those are some of the things that have led me to believe the ten-year is the best solution. By the way, I mean, they do run, I think it's, it's great that they run on natural gas. I mean, it's certainly less polluting than gasoline or diesel, so I think that, the credit to them for doing that. And the addition of picking up mattresses, I know mattresses have been the bane of some people in terms of what to do with them. And the fact that they're going to continue to, or they will begin to pick up mattresses, I think, is a great addition to their service. Lastly, I'd also like to point out that they stepped up with the bins for the homeless out of the encampments at no additional charge to any of us. And so I think that has been, from my way of thinking, of great benefit to the whole community that they voluntarily took that upon themselves, or when we, we discussed it with them and they voluntarily said that they do that. And so I give LSI some credit for that as well. I am a little concerned about the aggressive drivers. I mean, have you ever asked Ms. Earlson about that? Have you ever gotten to complain about aggressive drivers?
I've heard that from time to time, but like I said, we go out and follow the trucks and we haven't witnessed that firsthand. There's GPS tracking devices on the trucks that can tell us how fast they're going, where they are. So those things are monitored. And I have not witnessed it personally.
Well, I appreciate the comments that have brought, been brought to our attention this evening and I, but like Councilmember Warner, I support the ten-year extension because I think that's the most cost-effective and the best benefit for the, for the community.
Thank you. So how did this meeting start today? It started with some young students that were concerned about climate change, global warming, and reducing our footprint. Well, as the city manager pointed out, it's cheaper to bury this stuff. Composting costs about three times what it costs to just bury it. That's not being a very good environmental steward. We try to recycle the plastics, that's becoming problematic. But as I said, composting is really the right thing to do. The Yelp comments, I'm sensitive to those. I follow Yelp and I follow Nextdoor and I don't do rants and raves, but I do the others. But one of the things that just astonishes me is as I walk through my neighborhood, wish cycling, isn't that what it's called? I see metal poles in the composting. And if you can only imagine what a, what a metal pole would do to a vegetation grinder, it would destroy it. And then you have to take the whole thing down, rebuild it. Similarly with, I go through, see the recycling and you see these big chunks of Styrofoam. Styrofoam isn't, isn't recyclable, but yet it's wish-cycled. And those things get into the stream and they didn't, they didn't have to stop the whole thing, go through and clean these up. And as far as litter being blown around, I see litter blown around before the trucks come out because people try to jam too much stuff in, the lid blows up and stuff gets blown all over the neighborhood. And then you're walking along, you start picking this stuff up. So, and again, I appreciate the fact that people, this is a new phenomenon now, where they just take broken-up furniture, put it out on the sidewalk and say, "Free," like anybody wants it. But LSI will actually come out and pick those up. It sits a couple of days and becomes an eyesore. Call LSI and they'll pick those up. So that's been, been helpful, trying to keep the, the community looking nice. So I appreciate the fact that, that this is, this is tricky business. It's, it's expensive. It would involve the, Trish Monroe, Councilmember Monroe mentioned, low-income opportunities. It's subsidizing. You know, where do you subsidize one versus another? And then those costs are transferred to somebody else. So, and their costs go up. So I think what we've got is a good system. Once every, three times a year, you can have nine, you know, nine cubic yards picked up for free. So I think it's a good system. It's flexible. The oil recycling that we have, I think it's good. It was, it's, it accomplishes the goals of what those young ladies were here tonight trying to get us to do, reduce our footprint and be a good environmental stewards. So I also agree, I think that the longer term would be better. One other point I missed mention, I think there's this wonderful synergy about having the trucks run on natural gas because the, the waste that's taken to the landfill, it produces natural gas, and then the trucks run on the natural gas that the landfills are producing. So it's this, this circle that goes around. So as was pointed out, those, that system is ten years old, it's beyond its useful life, and that's got to be replaced. But it's a reduction in greenhouse gases, it's good environmental stewardship, and that's something that we're all buying into. Point the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Warner make, the longer term does reduce costs to the community, so I think that's a better way to go, to amortize it out like that. So I would support that. And with no further, if there are no further comments, I would support a motion.
I'll, I'll move. I, I was busy asking questions, so I didn't actually make a comment, but I would also support the ten-year plan and I would make a motion to that effect.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Warner, Monroe?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It passed unanimously. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we are at committee reports and matters initiated.
I just had two meetings, a LAVTA committee meeting and as well as a LAVTA board meeting. We got to them pretty uneventfully. I did want to bring up the fact that I was speaking to a car dealership manager the other day who mentioned that California Air, Carb Resources Board, thank you, I knew that, it's been so long, that Carb had a program for turning government-owned vehicles into electric vehicles. How that works, I don't know, but I'd sure like to explore it more than I could find out about it in the short time since I found out about it. Yeah, I told you, you sell a lot of electric cars there, aren't you?
We can bring back a memo to the council on, on that program.
Councilman Monroe?
So I wanted to express strong support for the residents, I was going to say young residents, but you know, actually residents who came out to ask all of us to help with the current climate crisis. I would love to put some matters initiated with regard to, they were very specific, there was a lot of requests. Some of those fit into the Climate Action Plan. Some of them don't. I would like to take Catherine Hayes's request for the, the emergency proclamation or, how did she phrase it?
Climate emergency.
Climate emergency. Declare, declare a climate emergency, provide, and go forward with that sort of as a starting point, if I can get a couple more nods?
Well, so let me just ask, what does declaring a climate emergency do?
That...
And what, what, what then follows after that? Is there a series of expenditures? Is there, just what, what does that, what does that mean?
I don't know. And that was actually the first thing I said when I had the first conversation with Savannah, you know, some time ago. My, my, what I would, we have a boatload of requests that were given to us tonight. I guess what I would like to do, and what Catherine Hayes said that I think was compelling was that this gives us a chance to inspire action. We have a spark going forward. What I want to do is encourage that to grow in some way. What I heard from her is, oh, this is a way to start that. And that's really all I'm looking to do. That said, I would love to see a way to take all this list and sort of apportion it out. Well, this, this is a long-term project, let's throw this in the Climate Action Plan. This is a, this is a shorter, this really goes with transportation, but it needs to happen quickly. That would be the biking. I don't want to let the requests that we heard just be, oh, well, that's nice. And I want to find a way to do that. I'm not sure what the best way forward was. I thought maybe...
Can we just have staff kind of answer that question?
Sure. Thank you.
So the matters initiated then is if you, you heard the list of requests, you've heard the thing for an emergency, could you give us back what all that means and in a practical way?
We can provide you some information on where those things fit in with actions you've already taken and what additional actions would be required to meet some of those items.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So that would come to us and then we could take those and turn those into...
So the first step with that would be a memo to all of you? And then if you wanted to place something on the agenda, you could do that. And then if there is some reorganization of your existing priorities and work program, that would be something that would follow on.
May I suggest that intermediate step between an agenda item and the memo is maybe some two-on-two meetings?
We can do all of those, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was a little overwhelmed and not quite sure how to proceed. I wanted to give a shout-out to LARPD, one of our sister governmental agency bodies. I live near Big Trees Park and it's newly been renovated and I have never seen the park busier with children of all ages. I was, I had no idea how much playground equipment was a thing. The durability and the design are amazing. It was great to see kids stretching themselves physically, mentally, playing together. Didn't see any phones out, just saw kids playing. So thanks to LARPD. On a personal note, if you haven't seen much of me, it's been kind of busy. I've been observing the Jewish fall holidays of Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and now it's Sukkot, Festival of Booths. Yesterday evening, I was with a friend's, I was, ate dinner in a friend's Sukkot booth. That's a temporary shelter that Jews eat and sleep in for a week, then we take it down and we go back home. And so as the sky darkened and the wind came up, I thought of those for whom temporary tents and shelters would not be replaced by sturdy homes. So moving from the personal to the council member role, that brings me to what the homelessness subcommittee is moving on to. We're currently moving from that short-term phase into the medium-range phase. And that, one of the things that we'll be doing there is looking at not temporary shelters, but transitional housing. So Vice Mayor Carling and I met with staff on September 27th to discuss how to think about some of these issues. And I just wanted to alert everyone, look for workshops coming soon for how we move into our medium-range process with this homelessness, you know, working towards managing homelessness. Tended a couple of luncheons celebrating economic development and tourism in the Tri-Valley, Visit Tri-Valley Luncheon, and then the Livermore Val Biz Awards from the Chamber of Commerce. And then also in continuing with meeting and greeting and not eating at home, had Tri-Valley Cities Met for Dinner and a report out from our state senator and state assemblywoman. And then League of California Cities Dinner on September 26th. Arts and Culture's been really busy this last few weeks. There was that pop-up art event that you've already heard a little bit about. It was fantastic. Lots and lots of young artists, lots of art, lots of music. We've already heard about the, what was it, gorilla?
That was baboon.
Baboon, I'm sorry, wrong primate.
That's an awesome baboon.
I would have, I would have, you know, like gone in a bidding war for you if I had a place to put it. So I attended the Annual Taste of Africa in Livermore. They had terrific food, music, dance, crafts. And then went from directly from there to the annual air show, open house and air show. And then on October 12th was at Art Walk where Councilmember Warner and I took a turn at the Livermore Cultural Arts Council booth and passed out all kinds of stuff about what's going on with arts in the community. Another shout-out to sister governmental agency, a partner in government school district. I attended Special Olympics where the, for soccer for middle and high school students and was just impressed with how many kids came out ready to play soccer. Two big things coming up. Census, please be aware, that's coming. We need everyone to participate because services need to be provided, whether you're counted or not. So we need people to help do the counting and we need you to participate and be counted. And then also, the Bay Area, Bay Area is planning for 2050, assuming we see 2050. With Planned Bay Area, that is the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, are gathering information for key strategies as we move towards this middle of the 21st century. I was out there grabbing people and saying, "Come in, we need you to be represented. Don't you know that half of the, of San Francisco and Oakland don't even think that we're part of the Bay Area? You want to be represented in the Bay Area? Make your voice known." So with that in mind, I want to get, this is to everybody out there who's still watching, here is where you go to make your voice heard. Okay? You got it? Is it, is it in focus? All right. So what that is, is it's two steps. Step one, read the information on what, what they want information on. Step two, go and give them the information. It's not a form, you got to write your own thing, but we want your information because Livermore should count here as well. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Warner?
Attended a couple of the LAVTA meetings, that's wheels, both the subcommittee and the board. And just moving forward there as usual, and I think the system is well-operated. Went to a ValleyLink board meeting, saw the feasibility report. The conclusion is that ValleyLink is feasible if we can cobble together the money. Met with members of LV PAC Board as well, and did participate in the LCAC booth at Art Walk.
Yes, thank you. So on the September 25th, I had a Stop Waste meeting in Oakland. Later that evening, some of my colleagues, I also attended the Tri- Later that evening, some of my colleagues, I also attended the Tri-Valley City Council Dinner on the 26th, joined some of my colleagues at the Wine Country Luncheon out at Wintie Vineyards, and then, again, later that night, had a League of California Cities meeting and dinner in Alameda, with a nice program about how to recover after a fire. It was interesting that they focused on that rather than how to deal with it before, but, I mean, somebody's got to clean up and, and worry about mudslides and other things that could occur because of a forest fire. On the 27th, Councilmember Monroe and I met with some of the staff here around the next stage and phase in the homeless discussions. And on the 9th of October, joined Ms. Earlson with the CMC, which is the Community Monitor Committee, of which I'm chair, which looks at the Altamont landfill, and there's a new, there's a new community monitor, and that's going to be a company called Langin. So, there's been a change in leadership there. And on the 10th, another Stop Waste meeting, and this one on recycling. And on the 12th, on Saturday, I sub for the mayor at a Filipino-American dinner and installation of new officers for that particular organization, which was out at the Els Club out in Springtown on Saturday night. There was some talk earlier about climate change and maybe changing our behaviors, and certainly, some folks like Mr. Dunbar here, who was always promoting bicycle riding and alternative transportation, and I just wanted to point out, there's a couple of recent things, one in the past and one coming up, that focus on bikes. And one is Kids Bike Lane, which on the 28th, at Jackson Avenue School, had a "Bring Your Bike and We'll Fix It" kind of a, of event. And so, this was to run from about 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, but they couldn't handle any more bikes after about noon, because they had so many kids bringing their bikes. And it was, they ended up repairing 84 bicycles for kids that day. So, imagine a kid brings their bike over with a flat tire, a broken chain, and they get to take it home with fully inflated new tires and tubes and a chain that's in all one piece. So, imagine their enthusiasm for that, and I think in terms of getting people to ride their bikes, it was, it was really a terrific way to encourage kids to ride their bikes. So, it wasn't just kids' bikes that were repaired, by the way, but it was mostly focused on kids. And then, this Saturday, there was a First Annual Bikes and Brews Ride, and so, this is, I think, from Livermore Cyclory and maybe others, but the idea is to raise money to buy bikes for kids that can't afford them. And so, I'm participating, but it's sold out, if you're going to ride your bike, it's sold out. And you get to bike from one brewery to another, I think there's only three, though, where you get a beer and snacks, I guess. And then, you end up at Pennyweight, which is a new brewery where the former Sunrise Mountaineering used to reside. So, the bike part of it apparently is sold out, so you can, so you can't buy tickets to ride your bike to these breweries, but you still can buy lunch at Pennyweight. And so, if you're interested in participating, again, it goes, the money goes to a good cause in terms of buying bikes for kids that can't afford them. So, and I think in the spirit of promoting alternative transportation, concern about climate change and so on, so on, that we heard earlier this evening, I think both Kids Bike Lane and Bikes and Brews are on the right track here in trying to get particularly young kids and teenagers to ride bikes and consider alternative transportation. I think these are a couple of things that this community should consider supporting if you have the time, the energy, and the finances. So, that's it for me. Thanks.
All right. And do you remember Del Sol High School? Just finished completing their 1,000th bicycle.
Yeah, and I think you were there for that.
I was there for that, that was awesome. But it just shows this community really giving back. On the 28th of September, I attended the Native American Powwow, a really cool festival in front of the Bankhead Theater. Mary Putoff from the Native American Center was there, and they erected a 40-foot-tall teepee. It was quite an event. We also, as was pointed out earlier, the art pop-up next to Baughman's. Has anybody driven by there and seen Charlie? Charlie's not looking real good. There's a skeleton out there of Charlie, the horse. On the 29th, Altamont Cruisers had their car show. It is the biggest car show they have ever had, 749 cars. It was phenomenal. These cars are absolutely works of art. I presented two awards as mayor's awards, and they have raised over a half-million dollars for children, and drug education is where they started, but also, they funded a lot of other nonprofits in the community. This is their 30th annual Altamont Cruiser Nostalgia Day Car Show, it's awesome. The October 2nd was the Business Alliance Meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, and October 3rd, I was at the first one of the Special Olympic Soccer Parades that they had, and what a wonderful event that was at Granada High School. The 4th was the San Joaquin Regional Rail, as Councilmember Warner pointed out, and we had an update on the feasibility study. October 5th was the 23rd Annual Airport Annual Open House, and they had, let's see, Rich Perkins was out there, were doing some phenomenal aerial work. And on the 9th, we had the, I'm sorry, the 4th was the San Joaquin Regional Rail, that's the ACE Board, as opposed to the, on the October 9th was the ValleyLink, where we had the feasibility update. The 10th, or the 12th was the Art Walk, thousands of people downtown, lots of artists, it was a wonderful, perfect day for it. Today, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission, 580 Express Lane Committee in August. There were 820,000 trips in the toll lanes, and there is up to a 25 mile-per-hour reduce, or increase, increase in speed using the toll lanes over the general-purpose lanes. We've got a net revenue of $1.3 million so far this fiscal year, starting in July. The Planning Policy and Ledge Committee, we talked about Faster Bay Area, this is a new program, and interestingly enough, there was some, a fair amount of pushback on Faster Bay Area, because we're kind of concerned that we're just going to get big-timed, because the cities that are responsible for a lot of the problems we're having with traffic and housing really are not part of the solution, and it doesn't really address the jobs-housing imbalance, and who, who gets the money and who has to solve the problem. So, very interesting discussion today, so stay tuned on Planned Bay Area. SB 5, which was the Affordable Housing Bill in the legislature, was vetoed by the governor, as was, as I mentioned earlier, SB 127 for active transportation. Interestingly enough, SB 328, that was the start time at the schools, which was signed into law, one of those, I think everybody feels good about that. Well, that's going to cost AC Transit $7 million a year more, because they can no longer coordinate the buses to hit multiple schools. They have separate start times now, so they're quite concerned about where the additional $7 million a year is going to come from. And, let's see, October 19th, of course, don't forget, is the Livermore Pride Festival Celebration, that's going to be in front of the Bankhead Theater. And on November 2nd, there's going to be a community celebration. This is the 150th anniversary of the founding of the city of Livermore. The plat, map was filed in October, and the, we were actually approved on November 4th, but we're going to have it on November 2nd, so more of the community can turn out. And I'd also like to request of the council that we bring back a resolution that, on that day, November 2nd, that we'll have a resolution brought back on the 28th for that meeting, and a request at the EOC side of the building where the meeting hall is, that that be named the William Mendenhall Community Room, after the founder of the It works for me, okay. Yeah, so, that we, if you bring back a resolution for the next meeting on the 28th, to have the, that designated as the William Mendenhall Community Room, and we'll have that resolution come back. So, with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor and memory of a great leader of our community, and that was Captain Josh Gatkin from the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department. He was just a great, a great mensch, a man that would, was always there to help individuals and help the community, and was brought out in the, several times during his memorial service, the way that he would go to inspire people to come up to their highest level of performance, he would say, "Don't suck." So, with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Captain Josh Gatkin. Thank you very much. We'll see you back here in this building, October 28th, 7 o'clock. Counsel, thank you.